Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge of recitation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just.
I just want to take a moment and thank our Omaha Police and Omaha Firefighters for their work and professionalism over the last week and week or two. As you all know, we had a tragedy at the International Nutrition Facility, very well handled by our firefighters, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims of that incident and their families. And then, of course, the Payton Benson tragedy, the police department's response to that has been commendable. I know they're working on that as we speak. And I want to note the family of Payton, Tabitha Manning and Councilman Ben Gray, our thoughts and prayers go out to them. And our thoughts are with Tabitha as she deals with this in an ongoing fashion. And couldn't have been handled any more, any better from an outsider's perspective, watching her with her strength and with her grace in her message to the very next state, Omaha, which was put down the guns and respond with love. And I hope you can hear your response with love. Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication in Daily Record, the official newspaper of the city of Omaha, on January 24, 2014. Notice for pre-council, regular city council meetings, January 28, 2014. A current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. This council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device.
Zoning ordinances on final reading and planning board attachments. Five is an ordinance to rezone property located at 3304 Burt Street from our three single-family residential district to our seven medium-density. It's over from 11414 for publication and a continuation of the public hearing. It had the publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend. Item number six is an ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district at 3304 Burt Street. It also was over from 11414 for publication and continue the public hearing. The publication has been made.
Public hearings on items number five and six are today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, Chair and council members. Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here to present the Nottingham Planned Unit Development and Change of Zone. This is a historic building that's on the register that has been refurbished in the process of actually getting people in. We, in the process of this whole project, have purchased these two lots and then the lot behind. All three were condemned at one point, have tore those down and are now in the process of heading towards a completion of this plan. We have consolidated all the lots, or five lots total at one point. That was recorded right before the end of the year. We had conditions of approval. We've met with Gifford Park on numerous occasions, had them sign off on the planned unit development materials, all the things for fencing. They have completely bought off on that part of the project. And we met all the conditions. So with that, I'll ask for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, I just want to thank you for the investment in the area. I know this was not an easy project. I mean, you were the second developer. The first one didn't go so well. And it's been vacant a long time, and I think that it's just unrealistic to think that you could make that work without acquiring the blighted properties and making them some parking so that you could get some people living in there. So I want to applaud you also for working with the Gifford Park Neighborhood Association. It's a very welcome addition to the neighborhood, so thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you. No further lights?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinances are passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number seven is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2016 Popleton Avenue from GI General Industrial District to our five urban family residential district. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number seven is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item number eight is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2540Z Street from HI Heavy Industrial District to our five urban family residential district.
Public hearing on item number nine is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Motion approved.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item number 10 is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2540Z Street from HI Heavy Industrial District to our five urban family residential district.
Public hearing on item number nine is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Motion approved.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item number 10 is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2711 South 23rd Street from our four single-family residential district, high-density, to our five urban family residential district.
Public hearing on item number 10 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents.
Motion approved.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item 11 is an ordinance to rezone property located west of North 29th Street, north of Tucker Street, and south of Clay Street from GI General Industrial District to NBD Neighborhood Business District. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 11 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item 12 is an ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 61st Street and Orchard Avenue from DR Development Reserve District to LI Limited Industrial District. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 12 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Please come down.
My name's Steve Gillespie. I live at 6044 Orchard Avenue. And I was just wondering if they're going to pave that road.
Okay. We can get that answer for you today, I'm sure.
And there's no utilities down that road.
Okay. Which road is that?
Orchard Avenue.
Orchard Avenue. Mr. Thiel, do you have the answer to that question?
James Thiel, City Planning Director. I do not believe there is a requirement that that road be paved at this time. Once there's a construction there, there may be at that time. This is simply rezoning.
To answer your-
And they can go ahead and build. Twenty years ago, they tried to do this. And they said, "You put the utilities and pave the road in there and we'll pass it." That's why that property's been sitting there so long. I've been fighting with the people down the street already with the dust and mud coming out of there.
So your desire would be to have it repaved when it gets developed?
Yes.
Okay.
And the utilities, sewer and water.
Okay. Mr. Thiel, this is a zoning item today.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Just in reading through this, I do see that the Public Works Department's requesting an improvement district be formed to construct the streets. So it would be required prior to a building permit.
So will be required prior to this moving forward?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other opponents? Public hearings closed. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item 13 is an ordinance to rezone property located at 9102 Burt Street from CC Community Commercial District to GO General Office District. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 13 is today. Are there any proponents? Mr. Weisman.
Mark Weisman, Weisman Development, 1000 North 90th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents here today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item 15 is an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Oakview to allow indoor sports and recreation located at 3405 Oakview Drive. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 14 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Item 15 is an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Village Point to allow Hospital General located northwest of 175th Plaza and Burke Street. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 15 is today. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. I'm Paul Donjoli. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Madonna Rehab Hospital at 5401 South Street in Lincoln, Nebraska. And thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council today. And I'm part of a small group of representatives working on the project here to share some information with you about it. First, we're blessed in the state of Nebraska to have excellent healthcare facilities, and Omaha especially, has excellent acute care hospitals specializing in trauma, cancer, and transplant. These hospitals save lives. And once these lives are saved, they require intense specialized rehabilitation services in order to put those lives back together. And that's what Madonna does. It puts those lives back together. Last year, roughly 25% of the patients that were admitted into the hospital units at Madonna came from Omaha facilities. This, to us, signaled a need or an unavailability for the scope of those services here in Omaha. And that speculation was confirmed by an independent study by HDR who determined that annually, roughly 1,300 individuals in the Omaha metro area would qualify for these services, but due to the unavailability of them, are referred to nursing homes. So we've not been working on this project independently. We've been visiting with folks in Omaha. And we've established partnership, a strong partnership, with the College of Medicine and the physicians at the University of Nebraska. With this proposed hospital, that physician group would not only clinically staff the hospital, but also work with us to establish an academic affiliation that would create a brand-new training program for physicians in the college specifically in the area of physical medicine and rehabilitation. We're working with DLR, Architects of Record, and Kiwet Construction Group would construct the facility. And the facility is a 110-bed hospital, roughly 250,000 square feet. The economic impact of the hospital during the construction phase would be roughly $104 million. It would create initially 450 jobs, 250 of which would be in construction. Once operational, it would generate an additional 820 jobs in Omaha, yielding cumulative annual wages of $22 million. The facility would generate roughly $45 million annually with an economic impact of $86 million. I'd like to show you just a rendering of what the hospital would look like here on the site. The hospital would be unique in its design as it would integrate the outdoors and bring the outdoors in in order to help deal holistically with patients during their recovery. The hospital would sit on the site in this way. And you can see Burt Street here and Chicago Street here and 175th Plaza here. With that, I would entertain any questions that the council might have.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other proponents today that want to speak? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you could stay up there, Don.
Yes.
I know it's far off and got a lot of work to do before it becomes to completion, but I want to say early, thank you and welcome to the neighborhood.
Oh, thank you.
The fact that this is an important service to the community, right now you have such a facility in Lincoln, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so what happens is that your facility helps keep people in the pipeline of being able to go home instead of into agencies or institutions. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I appreciate that. The fact that you're going to spend $104 million, that makes us smile.
Yeah.
All up here. 450 construction jobs and then 820 healthcare jobs, a great impact. I like, love the residential design. You're on a corridor that's kind of a healthcare corridor, the Dodge Street. And if I'm understanding it correctly, the area physicians really want this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's a perfect addition to the neighborhood, to my district, and we appreciate you investing.
Well, thank you. We look forward to being a neighbor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, I move the approval.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about Madonna because of some of the relationships that I've had friends who Madonna helped out. And I'll just give you a sort of a personal story. I was in the legislature for a number of years. I had one of my staff members, went back to school and received, he became a counselor, and he did his internship at the Madonna in Lincoln. And I could see the change. He couldn't tell me about what he was doing there, but I could see the change in him just as a person because of him working in the area in Lincoln. So when I saw the change in him as a person because of just what he was dealing with. And we may have a mutual friend by the name of Kim Rolback.
Oh, sure.
She always wanted us to tour the facility.
Yes.
I just, I'm welcoming you, but had a very good experience. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we, our goal is to work with individuals so that they can integrate back into their communities at whatever level is possible, so they can actively participate and be independent. And so it's nice to hear those stories as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The ordinance is passed seven to zero. Resolutions for preliminary Platts, Platt, and subdivision agreement. Item 16 is a resolution approving the preliminary plat entitled Skyline Oaks III located northwest of Hillendale Road and Skyline Drive with the request of a waiver of Section 5399 regarding sidewalks. It's over from 1714 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 16 is today. Are there any proponents?
I'm Joe Foley with Lamprey &amp; Airson, 14710 West Dodge Road, and just here to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents, public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Item Number 17 shall be laid over two weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Items Numbers 18 and 19 shall be laid over two weeks. Special use permit recreation club, item 20, resolution to approve the special use permit application submitted by Girls Inc. for a major amendment to a special use permit assumed to allow a recreational club in an R4 single-family residential district, high-density, with a waiver of Section 55186 height to 40 feet, located at 2811 North 45th Street. It's over from 1714 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Randy Pohlender with the Architectural Offices, 4610 Dodge Street for Girls Inc. The addition that we're proposing is a health and fitness addition, also contains a clinic for the neighborhood. We've made it through all our approvals except for one on the zoning board. We still have a signage issue to work through, which we're on the docket for the February meeting. So we should be good to go after that.
Great. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any other proponents today that want to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Cliff Morell. I live right down the street within, I think, 300, what is that, feet of this new construction they're proposing. So I just, I guess this is a gentleman here I might have to present the questions to because I was just wondering, as a homeowner, I had got a letter about this new addition and construction of, you know, the Girls Club. So I was just wondering, I was just curious as a homeowner, what's the pros and cons of this construction to me, you know, as a homeowner, you know, within that 300-feet radius? I guess I'm just wondering, is that going to affect the property values, is it going to go up or the-
Addressable.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, address you guys. Yeah, so I was just curious, is that going to increase my property taxes, home value? Or, you know, what's the deal with that? I mean, the pros and cons of it is what I'm curious about as a homeowner. Or do they want to buy my home, buy me out, or they can expand? You know, I'm just curious. So if anyone can have any answers for me, that'd be great.
I'm sure we can have a dialogue about that here in a minute. Any more questions than that? For now? Well, we'll come back to you in a second here, if that's okay.
Well, I gotta go put some money in my meter, I think expire at 2:20, man. So I'm gonna have to jet set out of here, but I'll come back. I mean, you know, it's probably gonna take me about 15 minutes or so.
This'll take 30 seconds, I think.
Okay, well, that's cool.
Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Any opponents? I hope not, so he doesn't violate his meter. Public hearings closed. Why don't we have the proponent come back up and see if you want to answer some of those questions. I can say from my perspective, and Councilman Gray's, we attended the, sort of the groundbreaking presentation on this addition, and I see it as a very positive addition to the neighborhood that's not going to expand past your current borders.
That's correct.
But provide a needed addition and a very welcome addition to what the Girls Inc. mission is, which is to keep girls strong, smart, and bold, right?
That's right.
And I'd note that the tragic incident we talked about earlier today was literally blocked from here, so the timing of this couldn't be any better from my perspective. But if you would, answer the questions proposed by the homeowner there.
I think, I'll try and answer your question. I can't speak to home value or anything, but probably the most disruptive time, obviously, will be during construction because the staff-
You want to speak into the microphone so we can-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Staff will have to park at an outside location other than their current parking facilities. However, once the facility is built, the main incident that we see in the neighborhood is during parent pickup and drop-off time. Most of the kids come by bus, but pickup is by individuals. So they tend to block the streets a little bit and block driveways, which tends to be a problem. But we actually have more parking, we're more than double the parking than what the facility had originally, plus we're increasing parking on the right-of-way on 45th Street to help alleviate that. So it should be a positive impact on the traffic. There should not be, there may be a small increase in the number of girls that will be attending once the new addition comes online. It's basically intended to augment their current programming. Staff increase is fairly minor even with the increase in size of facility. We also are adding a health clinic that will be open to the neighbors. So in a great sense, we're actually improving the community value of the project, so it's more outreach to the community. So I think, I'd hate to venture to say that home values may go up because of it, because there actually is a facility certainly within walking distance that provides health services to this individual. So I think it'll be a positive impact to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I noticed that you're going to add on to the old structure.
Correct.
Do you have any plans of going into the older part and remodeling there, or are you just adding on?
There is some remodeling in the existing facility. One thing Girls Inc. does really well is they keep their facility current. One thing Girls Inc. does really well is they keep their facility current, so everything, there's no deferred maintenance on the property exterior or interior. We're revising the existing gymnasium, you know, the old elementary school gymnasiums that were very small, where, is being replaced with a larger addition that allows us to have full-time cafeteria in the old gym. There's some minor classroom revisions, some minor office revision, but the majority is the new addition.
Would you be willing to meet with Mr. Morell and talk more with the neighbors in that area, not just him but others?
Absolutely. We actually had a public forum for the neighbors prior to the initiation of all the public procedures.
No, this is a different, this is a, be a different level. This is going and knocking on doors and saying, hey, let's have a cheeseburger, let's just tell them, that kind of.
Absolutely. And Girls Inc. is really good at that. In fact, we have a representative from Girls Inc. here who could address that.
Any, any chances that you're going to buy out Mr. Morell's house?
I don't think so.
Don't think so? I didn't think so.
Actually, you know, my greatest wish for this facility is that, that it doesn't last our lifetimes, that it's not needed in our lifetimes, but unfortunately, we know that it probably will. But the plans are to be on-site right now.
I believe that a society is on the brink where these kinds of things won't be needed because we as human beings will be able to reinvent ourselves. Maybe that's optimistic thinking, but I'm going to keep believing it. Thank you.
It's a good thought.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Morell, if I could, if I can get you up just for a second because you raise an issue, one that I've had several town hall meetings on, as a matter of fact. It's not likely that the redevelopment plans and the redevelopment of Girls Inc. is likely going to produce a significant property tax increase. In fact, a lot of the area that we live around, you, myself, and others, that, the property values have, in a lot of instances, dropped, in some cases, dropped significantly. We need to try and get some of that back if we can because we have a lot of people that are losing value in their homes. But one project like this one is not likely to increase property values. There needs to be additional rooftops, there needs to be additional business, businesses that come into that area and so forth in order for there to be the kind of property tax increase that would be perhaps maybe worrisome to me or you, but at this point, because of how drastically many of them have dropped in a lot, primarily these three districts specifically, we need to do some work to make that come back. But in this particular instance, with that single development, it's not likely that property values are going to go up.
Okay, so.
Not likely they're going to purchase your house either, so.
Well, darn it. But anyway, so, but, but there is a chance, though. I mean, you said it won't go up significant. I mean, are you saying that there is going to be no property increase?
No, it's not likely. One pro, one development is not, I'd hope that for a couple of other properties that we've invested into as well, but the property values, they tend to lag behind a little bit, and so they don't, they don't go up nearly as fast. And one or two or three properties are not going to cause a significant property tax increase.
Okay, well, we'll see, we'll see.
Okay.
I got a dash. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you.
Get that meter. Thank you, Mr. President.
No further lights?
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted seven to zero. Special use permit scrap and salvage services, item 21, a resolution to approve special use permit applications submitted by Scrap Central Incorporated for a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in a GI general industrial district located at 2728 North 85th Street. It's over from 1714 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Again, I'm Joe Foley with Lamprey &amp; Airson, 14710 West Dodge Road, here representing the applicant. I guess I'll leave it to any questions that may come up.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? I know we have some others in the audience. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted seven to zero. Special use permit indoor sports and recreation, item 22, is a resolution to allow special use application submitted by Mark Odekovin for a special use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in a GI general industrial district located at 14242 C Circle. It's over from 1714 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 22 is today. Are there proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolutions adopted seven to zero. Item 23, special use permit automotive sales, resolution of special use permit application submitted by MCS Enterprises LLC for a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a CC community commercial district located at 20210 Gate Dancer Street. It's over from 1714 for publication and public hearing. Had publication. A is planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 23 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Liquor, item 24, is the application of Fox Den Properties LLC DBA Holiday Inn Express and Suites 17677 Wright Circle for a Class I license.
Public hearing on item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there, Homer and White. I represent Fox Den Properties at the Holiday Inn Express. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
One second.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Application is granted seven to zero. Item 25 is the application of United Holding Group LLC DBA Pitch Coal Fire Pizzeria 5021 Underwood Avenue for a catering liquor license.
Public hearing on number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Jason Dale, representing United Holding Group, 5021 Underwood Avenue, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Granted seven to zero. Item 26 is Brass Knocker Incorporated DBA Dr. Jack's Drinkery, 3012 North 102nd Street for permission to, for an addition of their, to their present Class C and catering liquor license location of a beer garden approximately 30 by 70 feet to the east. A is a communication from the planning department requesting that the application be laid over for compliance with planning permits. We would require just a motion conditioned on those permits being obtained.
Public hearing on number 26 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name's Derek Wallen, represent Dr. Jack's, 312 North 102nd, here to answer any questions. We have all the permits filed and waiting on inspection for the fence.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, conditioned on permit seven to zero. Item 27 is Elite Lounge and Grill Incorporated DBA Rehab Lounge, 2615 South 120th Street, requesting permission to appoint Tom T. Nugent, manager of their Class C liquor license location.
Public hearing on number 27 is today. New proponents?
Doug Steffensmeyer with Rehab Lounge, 2615 South 120th Street, and Tommy Nguyen, been our employee for over two years. We want to request that he be appointed manager.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just curious, this isn't, has anything to do with your request, but what kind of rehab happens in your, in your place, your establishment?
That's an excellent question, sir.
Does it feel good rehab? What kind of rehab happens?
All the above, but we definitely like to bring on the, what the, the misrepresentation of what bartenders used to do behind the bar. We're fortunately, I've been working with them, phenomenal individuals that are going to allow us to be the only craft cocktailing bar in West Omaha. So what we like to represent ourselves as individuals like a stylist or a chef at one point was very reputable professionals. Bartenders lost that recognition, so at our establishment, we like to retrain that, rehabilitate that thought process. That's how we bring that on. Play on words and it kind of works out for our demographic.
Are you able to change wayward behaviors?
Absolutely. I mean, we can have a lot of fun. There is a, it was originally a play on words, but I think as long as we keep it clever and keep it classy, there's not going to be any issues. Some things that we've done to support that is work with some of the best security we've ever had worked with. Actually, a lot of our staff do work for the Douglas County Correction Office as of now, they're off-duty. So this is a great relationship that we've built in the last three months, and they continue to build us up and keep us in good standing.
About a year ago, I asked you to reach out to the neighbors. Were you able to do that?
Absolutely. Okay, to them.
Good relationship there?
Yep, absolutely.
And are you able to keep that back door closed so that the music doesn't vibrate out into the neighborhood?
Absolutely, yes, sir. And on top of that, we have added, I know this sounds scary, but additional speakers so that we don't have to play the music so loud. We can, we have additional smaller units around the perimeter of the area versus one century located loud, shooting from outside the door. So we, since our last conversation, I don't believe we have any complaints from our neighbors, so we take a lot of pride in that. Recently ran into one of our neighbors at the dry cleaners, and I asked her if there's anybody complaints, and she's all happy as well. So, so far, so good with the neighbors.
Excellent, that's a great report.
We did some where you work inside too, so that helped rectify some of that.
That's a great report.
Yes.
With that, I move the approval.
Sir, would you please identify yourself for the record?
Tommy Nguyen, 2615 South 120th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Grenant.
Yeah. Magic potions.
Grenant.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The request is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we can take items 28 through 31 together. Item 28 is a resolution to grant approval to EHPV Lottery Services LLC to operate a Big Red Satellite Keno location at Aussies Pub, 2326 North 72nd Street. Item 29 is at Choo Choo's Bar and Grill, 14240 U Street. Item 30 is Goldie's at 5502 North 103rd Street. Item 31 is the Bottomless Glass Bar and Grill at 17520 Wright Street, number 101.
Public hearings on items 28 through 31 are today. Ms. Coffey, proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm vice president of marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard. I have with me today the owners of the establishments, and we're here to ask for your approval for the locations yet before you.